As days of the Pasadena area community college district come to order. And tonight, which is our first meeting of the new year, we wish you a very happy and healthy new year. I'd like to have our newest director, trustee Dr. Ross Salvage, lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the December 18th, 2013 regular business meeting of the Board of Trustees.
So moved.
We have a motion by Dr. Mann, a second by Mr. Frazier. Any discussions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries unanimously. This is the time for introductions and recognitions. And do any of the trustees have any introductions this evening? If not, Dr. Rocha.
Yes, President Fellow, thank you very much. I'd ask you to join me at the podium, and I also would ask two of our colleagues to come forward, Professor Valerie Froster and Professor Sheila Rose, if they are here, if they could come forward to the podium.
Hi, guys. Thanks for coming. Okay. Let's see, should do this alphabetically. Trustee Fellow, and members of the Board of Trustees, and members of the public, we have two of our finest faculty members here to give them special recognition for extraordinary accomplishments. First trustee fellow, Valerie Froster, Assistant Professor of Biology of Pasadena City College has been awarded the IBI Prize, the Science Prize for Inquiry-Based Instruction. Ms. Froster's article on Problem-Based Learning appeared in Science Magazine, published by the American Association for the Advancement of Science. The prize was established to encourage innovation and excellence in education by recognizing outstanding inquiry-based science and design-based engineering education modules. We congratulate and recognize Valerie Froster. Valerie? And after, you could explain what that was. Trustee Fellow, I stand to recognize Professor Sheila Rose. Sheila Rose, an Assistant Professor of ESL at Pasadena City College, has been chosen by the National Resource Center for the First Year Experience in Students in Transition as an outstanding first-year student advocate. Ms. Rose will be honored at a reception ceremony during the Annual Conference on the First Year Experience in San Diego, California, on February 15th through 18th, 2014. Sheila, congratulations.
Well, I would like to thank the college as a whole and also the board for the amazing support for our first-year pathways program. It's really the work with the pathways program that has earned me this award, and I couldn't have done it without all of PCC behind me. So, thank you so much.
Well, mine was just a little teaching module that I do in the class and that I've been developing. So, I'd like to thank my dean and all the faculty that have supported me in problem-based learning. It's a tough pedagogy to implement, so I'm happy to have gotten this at a national level. Thank you.
Where's the cameraman? Is there a camera on the map? Oh, my God.
Just for the board, which is ridiculous.
Okay, very good.
Speakers have three minutes. It is the policy of the board that cards must be completed by the start of the open session. No public comment cards will be accepted after the start of the meeting. In total audience participation on any non-agenda or agenda item will be limited to three minutes. Ms. Wa.
I have a, well, I have two cards from the same person, Mr. Eduardo Cairo, and he is addressing the board on faculty hiring practices, and his second request is on online class offerings. Mr. Cairo.
Thank you very much. Good evening, board. The first issue is in regards to the flyer that the college has put out, Faculty Job Fair. This was an item that was discussed by Professor Haley and myself last time during public comment. So, let me, I'd just like to reiterate the fact that, despite the fact that we informed the board that there was no mutual agreement, that information was incorrect, I saw that in the board packet. The flyer, again, is there. It's incorrect. It states that, there's two things that are wrong. One, it states the differences between the two lists were discussed at this meeting, and a list of 11 new faculty hires was agreed to by the Academic Senate Faculty Hiring Priorities Committee and the president. Okay, so, number one, we did not agree. Okay, I have to reiterate, we did not agree. And second, the issue of these two lists, this is, the list presented by the college was a violation of policy. And the focus during this discussion, during our meeting, I made it a point to say that what the college, what, was that, during the list, well, the list that was presented to us was a list that violated college policy, and that's exactly what was asked of us to accept. So, based on that, I hope that the call, that the Board of Trustees collaborates with the Academic Senate in trying to resolve this issue. I know it was asked of Dr. Rocha to explain to the Board of Trustees this matter. Don't know if he has or has not, but based on the fact that this fly, this memo's inside, I would assume not. The second matter, just go ahead and move on to the second matter. Thank you. The second matter is a letter that I was asked to read by a faculty member regarding the online classes. In the flyer, it also states that no online teaching experience is necessary, and that in itself is a grave detriment to the students. And I'll just read the letter here. "It has recently come to light that PCC has decided to offer many short-term online sections of various courses. Although it is commendable that PCC is attempting to give more students access to necessary courses, the process by which PCC has decided to hire instructors for these courses is deeply flawed. PCC has recently announced a job fair to hire instructors to teach online courses, and in the announcement, PCC has stated that it will hire instructors with no previous teaching experience online. Further, PCC will need to hire many instructors with no previous experience if all those new courses are to be staffed. So, in March, there will be hundreds, if not thousands, of students taking online courses with instructors who have no previous experience teaching online, or perhaps no previous teaching experience at all. Online courses are difficult enough, and short-term courses are even more difficult. It is common for at least 30 percent of online students to drop or fail the course. We can expect this non-passing rate to increase if students are given instructors that lack adequate teaching experience. PCC has decided to abandon its usual practice of providing new online instructors with adequate training before they teach a course. According to Katie Datko, it has been PCC's policy that instructors receive approximately 40 hours of training prior to teaching an online course. This training ensures that instructors know how to use the technology and understand the ways in which teaching online significantly differs from teaching in a classroom. However, in a rushed attempt to staff these new courses, PCC will not provide this valuable training to instructors before they teach the course. Instead, instructors will receive merely one-fourth of the training before being recklessly tossed into an online environment, and then will be expected to complete the rest of the training at the same time as they are teaching the courses. This change in training policy is unfair to our students, who have the right to expect competent, well-trained instructors. Even worse, if an instructor fails to perform adequately during training, that instructor will continue to teach the course, since the Distance Education Department cannot fire teachers already teaching a class. We are not only creating a situation of staffing courses with under-trained instructors and allowing underperforming instructors to remain in the classroom. Our students deserve better." Thank you very much.
President Fellow, we have received one other card.
But you're not supposed to take it after the meeting started, isn't what he just said?
Is that what you said?
Yeah.
You can't accept it. Oh. Okay, so, this card from Mr. Hyder, since it came after the start of the agenda, we cannot accept this item.
We're going to move on to the consent calendar today. Is there any items the trustees would like removed for separate vote? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Wa, a second by Dr. Mann.
President Fellow, I'd like to record an abstention vote on the closed session 58P.
Okay.
Advisory abstention.
Thank you.
President Fellow, I'd ask Bob Miller, is there a couple of items that we want to correct and one we want to pull? So, for the trustees' benefit, there's a couple of items that we'll note.
Yes, in your folders this evening, Consent Item 88B was revised, so you have a revised item in your folder. And then, and it spells out specifically, there are three items that needed to be corrected, and we did that. And then Consent Item 63P for Employment Change, Status and Separations Classified Employees, there is one minor correction to that one as well, and you have both of those in your packet.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on this floor. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by, advisory vote, please.
Aye.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries unanimously. On to action items and discussion with possible action. Number F today is review and receive the audit, 2012-2013 District Independent Financial Audit. Mr. Ro, Dr. Rocha?
Yes, President Fellow, the Chair of the Board of Trustees Audit Committee, Dr. Ross Salvage, and the Audit Committee met with the auditors on Monday evening. I'll turn this over to Mr. Miller. The item here is for our independent auditors to present the audit to the Board of Trustees, and then for the action at the end of the presentation, and all of the, any questions or discussion would be to officially to receive the audit.
Thank you, Dr. Rocha. On Monday evening, the board subcommittee dealing with our audit met. The subcommittee is comprised of Dr. Salvage, who is the chair, Vice President of the Board, Ms. Belinda Brown, and Trustee Martin are on the Audit Committee. At that meeting, two representatives from our auditing firm, Vicente Lloyd and Stutzman, Renee Graves, who is CPA with the firm and partner, and our principal auditor, as well as Megan Asselin, the senior manager of the firm and the audit lead, presented our district audit, our district audit and umbrella audit to include the district, Measure P or Prop 39, as well as the PCC Foundation. I would like to invite Ms. Graves to the podium, please, to start the presentation, and then after that, we'd certainly take questions from the board, should the board have them. And Dr. Salvage may have some comments as well.
Thank you very much, and being a very good delegator, my first job is going to delegate to Megan, who's going to talk about the district report, and then I'm going to make a few comments in regard to the Measure P and the foundation audits.
Good evening. Before you tonight, you should have three reports, and as they were mentioned, they were for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2013. Just to briefly mention again, those reports were the Pasadena Area Community College District Report, the Measure P Financial and Performance Report, and the PCC Foundation Report. As already mentioned, we have reviewed these in detail with both management and the Audit Committee. All three of these reports received a clean opinion, meaning that the financial statements were fairly stated. There are a few items that I'd like to cover with the district report. First of all, there were a few accounting standards which were implemented this year. One of these changed the look of the financial statements and some of the account descriptions. Another changed the result in the, and resulted in an increase to the beginning, net position, as it was a retroactive implementation for capitalized interest. There was one audit adjustment. This was for the understatement of the claim's liability. As a result of our audit, the district had three current year findings, two related to internal controls, and one state compliance finding. We also review findings from the prior year. Of the six prior year findings, all but one was implemented. At this time, I'm going to pass back to Renee, who will cover the Measure P and the foundation audit.
And if it's acceptable to you, we thought we'd just take questions at the end. However, if you prefer to ask questions on the district report, and then we move to the others, we can do that as well. So, I don't know if there's a preference, or if I should just move on.
What's the pleasure of the board? They, do you want to, we have three audits to move through, so do you want to do the district audit, the global audit, and then move on to the foundation and Measure P? Or do you want them to present all three and then save all questions for, because the three presentations will be this long?
Let's hear all three.
The Measure P of the Prop 39 audit is the smaller-sized bound copy, and one change in there this year from the previous year is there was both a financial audit and a performance audit, and in the prior year, they were two separate reports, but at management's request, they asked for that to be in one bound copy, and we thought that was a great idea, so we did incorporate that. The table of contents explains, you know, which part is the performance and which is the financial audit. So, to cover that relatively briefly, Megan already mentioned the clean opinion, so that's very positive, and it's a clean opinion for both the performance audit and the financial audit. Expenditures in the Prop 39 Measure P were 19.5 million, and we did test a very significant amount of that, and our main goal there is to ensure that all of the expenditures out of that fund are for projects that were approved by the voters. In addition to that, in relation to the performance audit piece, we are looking at a number of administrative-type things. We look at the makeup of the Oversight Committee, that they're keeping minutes, minutes are posted to the website, any reports they receive are posted to the website, as well as an annual report being issued. We do have two findings. We had no findings related to the financial statements, but on the performance audit side, we had two administrative-type findings. One is that the website was not up to date. An annual report was issued for June 30, 2012, however, it wasn't posted to the website. And the other comment that we had was related to expenditure reports that were presented to the Oversight Committee. It was being prepared by one office, but it wasn't being reconciled back with what was in the general ledger. So, the information being provided to the Oversight Committee, and this only happened on two reports, was not as updated as it should have been. We have talked with management about that, and they have told us the procedures that will be in place to correct that, and we have every confidence that it will be corrected in the 13, 14 year. Then in regard to the foundation audit, in this, I should mention that we have met with the Foundation's Audit Committee and their management. They have gone over the report, they have approved the report. I know that Bobby's here and can certainly help answer any questions that you may have. It has yet to be presented to their board. I believe that's happening this.
Perfect.
Thank you. So, in regard to the foundation, it is a separate, you know, legal entity, but we are bringing that to you tonight, and I think the best information you can take from that is the foundation is an extremely fiscally sound organization in operation. Their current ratio is extremely high, their operating ratio is also extremely high, and one thing that we're very impressed with for a foundation and a community college is that they have almost 16 million in endowed funds, which is quite an accomplishment to their fundraising efforts over the years. And because of their position, they're able to generate a very positive cash flow. So, for a nonprofit operation, that's extremely positive. So, those are the end of our comments. It's been mentioned by both Megan and Bob that we did meet with the Audit Committee. It was a very extensive meeting. I think we went about three hours, so you can picture yourself talking about financial statements for three hours. You'll understand how detailed we went, but the Audit Committee asked incredibly intelligent questions that got right to the point, and it was a very, I think, productive meeting. We explained a lot of things. I think there was a really good understanding, and we also have discussed getting together in March or April to start planning for the next audit, so we can continue that relationship with them, so that they have input into the whole audit process.
And if I can add quickly that VLS, as a reminder to the board, and Dr. Salvage is new to our board, is a new audit firm. We were with a previous firm for five years, and we went out to bid for a new firm, and VLS was selected, and they ran us through our paces. I have to say that they looked under every rock they could find, and they were very diligent, and they were very polite, very professional, but we were actually about a month delayed on getting the audit to you because of the extensive work that VLS did. The other thing that some of you who may have been reading our audits in the past may notice is that these are a bit more reader-friendly than I think the past ones have been. They are a little bit easier to comprehend from a layman's point of view. So, from staff's perspective, we were very pleased with the services provided by them, and we were also very pleased that there were no material weaknesses, that there were some findings, and when you consider that we are a $280 million a year, give or take operation, the number of findings we had are reasonable, certainly we are working on them right now, we'll take care of that. I just wanted to comment that we are very grateful to Megan and to Renee and to their team for at least our first-year experience with them.
Thank you, and I want to thank the Chair, Salvage, and Ms., Mr. Martin, and Ms. Brown for the outstanding meeting that I heard took place on Monday. It was a thorough four-hour meeting, I heard, on the audit, so thank you. Is there any further questions? Mr. Frazier.
I'll defer to Dr. Mann.
Dr. Mann?
I just have, you know, just a really very basic question for the Chair of the Audit Committee. It's my understanding that the Audit Committee is legally obliged to meet with the audit firm without the administration there. Did you meet with the, with the?
Yes, we did.
Without the administration?
Yes, we did.
And they answered all the questions satisfactorily, just with the Audit Committee and the auditors, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Just one thing, I'm really satisfied that the district's response to every, all of the findings has been very complete, and that there's generally a timeline for what we're going to do, or it's happening now, and I'm pleased to see that. I just have one comment on the Measure P Performance Audit Finding 13-2, because my understanding is that the Oversight Committee was presented with info on October 2013, and then on that basis, they provided us a recommendation on what to do for further Measure P projects. So, I'd just like to suggest that maybe the Citizens Oversight Committee be provided with an accurate, I think that the district's response doesn't cover, will make sure that the COC will know that there was a discrepancy, and perhaps that might alter the recommendation. I don't know if it would or not, but I think it's, we owe it to the Citizens Oversight Committee to get them the accurate information, so that if they do want to change their minds or if they do want to renew the recommendation, even based on the accurate expenditures, they can do that.
Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
I've got one question.
Yes, go ahead.
Right, without getting too technical from the accounting standpoint, one of the findings on the district audit had to do with, well, what most people would think of as reserves for future liabilities, and it's not that easy, looking at the audit report, to appreciate the extent of those liabilities that the district has, and we're looking into how we will make sure that that's, you know, going beyond the requirements of the standard accounting requirements to make sure that those liabilities are apparent.
Thank you. Is there any other comments or questions? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to receive the District Independent Financial Audit.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Frazier and a second by Ms. Wa. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries, excuse me.
Let's find it, aye.
Item number G today is to receive, our action this evening is to receive and schedule a February 5th, 2014 public hearing regarding the initial proposal.
President, point of order.
Yes.
For purposes of the minutes, I believe the motion included all.
All three.
All three of the audits.
Thank you.
I think the way it was stated might have been a little misleading, but it was my understanding from the mover and the second that that included all audits.
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Our action this evening is to receive and schedule a February 5th, 2014 public hearing regarding the initial proposal from the Pasadena City College, California Federation of Teachers, 6525 local, representative of classified staff for negotiations for successor agreements. Any questions from trustees? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion from Ms. Wa, and a second from?
Second.
Ms. Brown. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Signify by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. Action item number H today is the Public Hearing on Initial Proposal from the Pasadena Area College District, the Pasadena City College, and this evening, we will open a public hearing, and we will close it. Is there any discussions? If not, public hearing is closed. At this time, we'll move on to information items, and in front of you, item number I this evening is appointments to the Pasadena Area Community College District Board of Trustees, and you have a corrected copy in your folders, and I want to thank all of you for being speedily accepting these appointments, and committees have already met some of them, and it looks like it's going to be a good, good year. Item number H today is a progress report, a review of the board policies for accreditation self-study. Dr. Rocha?
Yes, and it'll be a brief report indeed, but an important one. I would ask Crystal Colross, I think, Crystal, if you just come up. Crystal's not going to make a presentation, but under item J, okay, you have the board policies, and she will very briefly describe what that is, and if you have any questions, all to the point, and make sure that you understand that the board policy review that's required by accreditation has begun and is ongoing, and will be completed by September, so that we can submit this in the self-study by December. Crystal?
The only thing I would add to that is what I have provided you with this evening are the chapters one and two, which are primarily the board-related policies and administrative procedures. I also am working on what we call chapters three, four, five, six, and seven, which are the rest of the policies and procedures. We have, of course, you approve all policies, but these are the ones that primarily the board focuses on. And you'll see in there that I listed each policy that they're in chapters one and two, whether it is illegally required, legally advised, or suggested. The other thing that we're doing is we are about to switch our policy numbers over from what we currently have to what is actually used by the league, which going forward in the future will make it a lot easier for us to update our policies and administrative procedures. You also have there all of the legal citations for all the policies. What I didn't bring, because I was trying to be considerate, is that for each one of these chapters, there is at least one to two binders that are six inches thick that contain the policies, the procedures, the legal documentation, and also examples from other districts. But at any time, if you'd like to see anything, please let me know. I can send you a digital copy as opposed to the entire binder.
Thank you. Any questions? Dr. Mann?
Well, I have, I have maybe not a question, but a comment. I'm very pleased to see this, but I'm extremely concerned that, for example, looking at the calendar, the board, because I'm the Chair of this committee, we get 17 policies in May. That is a huge number of policies, and so it looks to me like that the members of the, on this committee should probably plan on canceling all their summer vacation. I mean, really, the, I mean, I think the, and what I'm really concerned about is, I think for this to be considered an acceptable review by the accreditation team, having just served on accreditation team and looked at this, there has to be some evidence that the board, as a board, actually looked at these policies and general, and engaged in a discussion. I don't know if it's going, I don't see how we can possibly do that unless we schedule several business meetings, maybe during the summer, because for, if the board were to address 17. address 17 policies at one meeting, I, we have done that in the past and it is very bad. So I'm concerned at the short time that we have to do this.
Good point. Mr. Frazier and then?
Just a question, because it does say due date for review by board subcommittee being May, so in theory, we could do some of these beforehand.
If we had them.
So I guess that was going to be my question, is how many of these are ready for review by the committee in the next, how soon can we get the bull rolling versus trying to do everything all in May?
I actually think the best way to handle this is for the subcommittee to group them. Pick like five that you want to work with, I'll send it to you so that you can review those, and then pick another five. That's actually why I gave you the notations, whether it was legally required or legally advised. And you also might want to notice whether or not we actually have the policy at this time. If it's a legally required policy and we don't have it right now in place, that may be something you want to focus on first. You are in no way rushed to get this done by the time the self-study is submitted. We just wanted to give an aggressive timeline so you knew we were trying hard.
And in fact, Crystal, when you and I talked about this, didn't we say that the goal for the self-study might be to have 60, 70% complete and have great substantial evidence in front of the visiting team that the work was taking place? And it's not just board policies, it's all of our policies throughout, so.
Mr. Frazier, then, and then Mr. Martin.
But just essentially, if we can, you know, get some of these that, you know, maybe with your own guidance, just what we need to do in the next couple of months versus by May, versus by July, and we can start working on that, I think that would be a good way to go about it. I just, I'm wondering, my question still really stands, how many of them are ready to really be looked at now versus how many still need to be worked on through staff, through shared governance, whatever it needs to do to get to the subcommittee? If we know that.
The two chapters I have in front of you, they're board policies, they pertain to the board, so pretty much the board does this.
So we could look at them, in theory, whenever we would like to?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, my suggestion in, to speak to Trustee Mann's concern, which I share, is that, I asked Trustee Fellow to have some time for this at the retreat.
Okay.
So that we, what I would recommend, so frankly, I feel comfortable that the work group, known as the Board Policy Review Committee, schedule at least a monthly meeting in, say, February, March, and April. And then we also, perhaps we can also schedule one of those meetings to have the consultant, the CCLC consultant come so that you can actually meet directly with her. And it seems to me that that would be, meet your concern and get the job done.
I was going to wait to see everybody spoken, and I would like to see this done monthly. I think Dr. Mann and I have spoken about this, and I think the accrediting team, having been on these teams, would like to see us logically look at these in every month instead of just all at once.
If I could, if I could continue, first of all, I mean, every policy we have is a board policy. So if you, when you say by board policy, you mean a policy that has to do with the function of the board, that, I understand that, but all the policies are board policies. Secondly, I just was on an accreditation team in October for a very fine, well-managed college, and it was very clear from the training I had that they used to review all of your board policies within a six-year period. And this, they got dinged on this because not only there was some that they had reviewed, but they hadn't, they weren't updated on the date that they had reviewed it. So I don't think we're going to get, I don't think the accreditation committee will accept we've done 60 to 70%, and we've got a process. I think we need to have them all reviewed, and we need to have proof that we, have they been reviewed in the past six years? Now, many of these we have looked at in the past six years, those we maybe don't need to, need to do, but I, there's a lot of policy that needs to be looked at.
Thank you. Mr. Martin and then Ms. Brown?
Well, Dr. Mann answered, I think, my question, because my question, my question comment was to make the first policy we review our policy on policy review, such that we should be doing this long-term. And I didn't know the appropriate long-term, but it sounds like from Dr. Mann that six years is the appropriate long-term, which says to me you do one-sixth of all your policies a year, and it should be done thoughtfully in that amount of time. And then my hope, which she also addressed, would be that it seems we just went through a fire-sale review of policies back not too many years ago, that under our policy of policy review, we delegate how many are done each of the six years and what they are, and we demonstrate to the accreditation, we're not fire-sale reviewing them again, but deliberately moving forward with one-sixth this year and one-sixth the next, that that would be more impressive than doing what we did last time and fire-sale go through them. But apparently, from a wiser, more experienced Dr. Mann, that may not meet muster with the accreditation committee, but that would be the way I would want to approach this as good governance.
Thank you. Ms. Brown?
So my question was, what exactly, Crystal? So would the accrediters really pay attention and look at policies that are suggested or legally advised, or would they focus on the ones that are law? How does that work?
Legally required?
Yeah, legally required, yeah. So what is the difference? I mean, will we be dinged for something that's suggested or legally advised, or would they be focusing specifically on the ones that are legally required?
If I may, I want to, first of all, apologize to Dr. Mann, because I did lead the group astray, and I did not mean to do that. There are two things we're trying to accomplish here. First of all, we are trying to bring our board policies into compliance, or into, compliance is the wrong word, but into alignment with the Community College League model standards, model policies, which is a project we've talked about for the, if you will, the 10 years that I've been here. And that's the, that's the primary project that we're engaged in right now, which is why this is such a massive project. So there's two things. The second thing is the accreditation work. We actually have been following for at least a few years the six-year model and trying to do about a sixth of our, of our policies every year. So I think, I apologize, I think I confused the group by saying our number-one priority is the model standards and try to get ourselves in alignment with the model standards. And then second is to do the accreditation work.
Thank you.
So what's my answer?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, answer to my question?
Yeah. The answer to your question is that, first of all, we're, this is the board's work, but we're at the disposal of the board. So however much work, you know, whatever the work tasks that you decide is to be done. Second of all, we do have, have engaged the CCLC consultant, and my recommendation is that we, again, you know, discuss this more fully at the retreat and make a work detail. It is not technically necessary to review every policy, but it is necessary to make sure that you have a provision for reviewing every policy, including, but the first priority are the ones that Crystal called out as legally required. So we should make a work detail at the retreat of, okay, these are legal, we're going to start on these legally required ones. And then the, what I would suggest and ask the board committee to do is to review the other ones and basically to make its own recommendations for priorities of, well, with the time that we have left, we can usefully review these policies and get that done by the timeline, say, in the summer. But it's not, as long as that process is ongoing, my, and as long as that process is demonstrable and documented, it's not absolutely necessary that every single policy has to be reviewed. And the board may, in its wisdom, look at many of the policies and make a perfunctory review and just say that, those look fine, those look fine, and so on. So we will have the benefit of the CCLC consultant, and in a moment, Matt and Stephanie will talk. We have Julie Slark, you know, who's a very able and well-known consultant who's working along, to make sure that the board has the information it needs in this regard as to which policies absolutely have to be reviewed and/or revised.
And I think we're all on the same page that it will be a monthly process. Dr. Mann?
I would just like to say again, having just done this in October, that the Accreditation Commission does not look at what's legally required, nor does accreditation look at what the Chancellor's Office requires. The Accreditation Commission looks at what the Accreditation Commission requires. And I, there may be a different interpretation of what there is on the review, and I will go back and will check it. But I think that, I'm pretty sure it's that they all reviewed every, you know, every six years. But the thing of it is, it might be there's 50 policies that we could say, we don't need any changes in these, all we need to do then is say, we looked at these 50 policies and put the magic date on them. That's what they look at, is the date. And so we could say like on, on March 14, we decided all these 50 policies did not need to be reviewed, and we just dated that we had at least looked at them. So I do think we need to talk about this at the, at the retreat and maybe go back. And I could be wrong on understanding, but that wasn't what we were told to do, and particularly not by our team leader, that wasn't what we put in the report, and that wasn't what was sent to the Accreditation Commission, because this particular college is going to be, that was found as a, not being in compliance, because they had policies that had not been reviewed since 2008, just like we do. And they were not major policies, they were parking policies, they were baby, you know, kind of policies. All it needed was the date, saying that the board had at some point decided they were okay. I mean, that, I think that's what we need to be mindful of. Crystal, does that, does that make, does that make sense? Even if it's, even if it's overkill, what difference does it make if the committee says, here's 50 policies that are fine, recommends it to the general board, we approve it and then put the, then put the date that we considered them?
I think that's an excellent approach.
I do, too, and I, you're going to be busy, Dr. Mann.
We're going to be busy.
Any other questions or comments? Dr. Frazier?
Just, just really quickly then, because it looks like, because one of the other things that was said initially was that we're trying to align the policies that we have to be in connection with the CCLC's model policies, which suggests more than that perfunctory checkoff, unless, is it just as simple as taking Bylaw 1200 and renaming it BP 2010, for example?
In some cases, that is what's going to happen.
Okay.
It's more of an alignment with the numbering.
Okay. And then a separation of the procedures from the policy, so you've got the BP and the AP. Okay. I just want to make sure, because otherwise, I don't want us to think that this is going to be a lot easier when suddenly we have to do a lot of wordsmithing to make them align. I just want to be clear on what the task is.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Crystal. We'll now have a progress report on the accreditation self-study. Dr. Rocha?
Yes, and for this, I welcome and call forward Matt Jordan, Dean Matt Jordan, and Professor Stephanie Fleming, who are the co-chairs of the college's accreditation committee. There is some brief information on this in your packet under K, but they will present a very, very brief report, and then this kind of tacks on to the previous discussion and work from any questions you may have. So, Matt, welcome. Stephanie, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Rocha. First, I'd like to take a second to introduce my fabulous partner in everything accreditation, Stephanie Fleming. She's been a faculty member at PCC for a decade. She's a former coach to the forensics team, and she is my partner in crime in working on accreditation.
Thank you. Welcome. So, first of all, we wanted to give you an update on the status of the self-evaluation. In order to do that, we also wanted to describe how it is that we're approaching the campus-wide communication. One of the things that we need to make sure that we're doing effectively is communicating the process, where we are for everyone in the PCC community. So the first thing that we're trying to do is approach this with the campus-wide communication. And we're trying to do this in several ways. The first approach is we wanted to make sure that we're sharing all of the necessary information at the necessary times to all shared governance groups, and we've done that. For example, we've given information presentations as well as updates to, say, the associated students. We've also presented to academic senate, you know, for updates and other shared governance groups.
Yeah, we also did four workshops during professional learning days for faculty. We did a presentation to faculty on Flex Day, and we also did a presentation with the classified staff on classified days.
The next thing that we did is we spent some time revamping the website. So ACCJC has a requirement that we have an accreditation website or a page on our website, and it has to be one click away from the homepage, and we hadn't been doing that. And so we rectified that situation. You'll now see, if you're on the main page of, you know, pcc.edu, down at the bottom, there's a button now that says accreditation. And in addition to adding that, we've revamped the entire website. So when you first click on accreditation, it will bring you to this page here.
And this website serves two functions. There are really two audiences. One is the entire campus community that can come here for information about where we are in the process, but also the website will serve for the visiting team when they come, because we've included a lot of, most of the required information that they'll want to look for when they come to do the site visit.
The next thing that we've done is continued the tradition of having an accreditation newsletter. During the last cycle, we had the Accreditation Dialogs newsletter, and we wanted to continue that. And so these are two examples. We've had four editions of the newsletter. We make sure that we send this newsletter, newsletter out to everyone via email to all constituency groups. It's also on the website, on the accreditation website, and we also post it to the poll. So we've had four editions, and the fifth edition will be coming out next month.
So we've also, in addition to communication, we've also been undergoing a significant amount of training. Many of our PCC staff have served on external site teams, as Dr. Mann mentioned that she has. Also, I have, Stephanie have, multiple faculty and administrators also have served onsite teams.
Yeah, and we found that very important to give us that perspective of what it's going to be like when the visiting team comes, to help inform us as we craft our self-evaluation successfully.
Yeah. Staff members and faculty have also been attending multiple conferences and workshops addressing ACCJC standards and accreditation. And in addition, we took a team of nine PCC faculty, staff, and managers to a training preparing us to write the self-evaluation.
One of the things that we've also done is to focus on those areas of recommendation and to be able to communicate those recommendations to the campus, to make sure that we're fully prepared and that we are fully updated when we're writing the self-evaluation. And one of those first areas is integrated planning.
And integrated planning are, is the, are the processes of program review, planning, and resource allocation, which are really integral to Standard One of the accreditation standards. We're very confident that we meet the standards around integrated planning, but one of the standards is that you evaluate your integrated planning processes. So what we've done is we've been meeting to evaluate our processes, and that process has been really fruitful and has generated many suggestions for improvement, and that process, that process for improvement is in progress now.
Yes, so we've had two major study sessions where members from three of the major campus-wide shared governance groups that deal with integrated planning came together, they evaluated the process, they've also, you know, provided suggestions. Now we're moving on to the next step, where we'll form a focus group to start to implement some of those suggestions that came out from the meetings of these three shared governance groups.
The next area that we've received previous recommendations on is SLO assessment. And this is a reference guide that's provided to faculty. Just look at it, look on it as a graphic, you can review it in your packet. But this outlines the different ways that we document SLO assessment. Program SLOs are, the assessment of program SLOs are documented in program review. Course-level assessment is documented in an annual assessment report, which I'll talk more about on the next slide. And our general education outcomes assessment, which is really at a, kind of a fledgling stage, we did our first general education outcomes assessment with a pilot group last spring, and our second is about to begin this term. We will assess cognition, otherwise known as critical thinking, this spring.
And one of the things that we're trying to do in this is, we have a fabulous program review process now that's been developed on our campus. But one of the things that we find is that we also need to make sure that everyone knows how to do it effectively, how to implement that effective policy or process. And so, for example, we've been running workshops. So I ran a program review workshop where we had about 30 faculty who are engaged in writing their program reviews this year, attend a series of four different workshops where they went through the process. where they went through the process, learned how to do it effectively, and it also gave them time to sit down and actually complete the task at hand.
And this semester, we've expanded that into a semester-long seminar that will include the basics of SLO assessment, e-portfolios, and program review. So, the annual assessment reports that I mentioned earlier is where departments document their course level assessment. It's a narrative report where for each course, they report on one of the SLOs. They describe the assessment, they analyze the results they've received from the assessment, and then they document the recommendations for improvement that they've implemented to improve student learning. The report was due at the end of last semester. We've had 27% of the reports submitted. Another 48% are in progress. And those last two statistics of 48% and 25% are really helpful for us, because they direct us to where we need to provide support for people over the next several weeks to make sure we attain 100% submission. We've been, the instructional deans are working with the faculty in these departments, and we're aiming to reach 100% by the end, by the middle of the semester.
The next area that we need to focus on is campus climate and collegiality. And there have been several steps that we've taken to address these areas.
Yeah, the first is with the leadership of Crystal Colross, we are working with the Great Colleges to Work For survey. This is an online survey on workplace satisfaction. It looks at such areas as professional development, compensation and benefits, participatory governance, and about seven other areas. Modern Think, the company that administers this survey, comes to campus, they'll spend a day helping us design a communication strategy prior to administration to ensure that we have sufficient participation to get valid results. They will then perform a neutral analysis of the results, and then return to campus to present their analysis to a variety of constituent groups.
The next step that we're taking is through education on participatory governance, and providing some training in this area. The first thing happened this week, actually, in the academic senate. We had a presentation from a member of the statewide academic senate. And then we'll also have a similar type of presentation and training campus-wide in spring of 2014.
The third strategy to address campus climate and collegiality originated from the Planning and Priorities Committee. And they are, they have developed a request for information to engage a third-party consultant to help the campus address issues around campus climate and collegiality, so that we can begin to work together in a more successful manner for the benefit of students. So, that's still in the shared governance process. We expect that it's going to move forward to the college council in the next several weeks.
The next thing that we did is, we addressed everyone who, the process that we had for participating in the drafting of our self-evaluation, we asked everyone to apply, so that we had, you know, a group that we could place in each one of the standards based on areas of expertise. And we had a really wonderful turnout of people that sent in applications to work on the self-evaluation. And then, once we had all of those individuals together, we wanted to make sure that we provided adequate training for these individuals, so that they could guide others when they were in a leadership position, and so that they were well-informed of the process when they were helping to draft the self-evaluation.
And also, I would say to ensure that our self-evaluation was evidence-based and not anecdotal.
And so, we provided two different trainings. The first was a four-hour workshop that was for the co-chairs. We have co-chairs that represent management, faculty, and classified, that lead each one of the standards areas. And so, we provided training for those co-chairs who were going to be in a leadership position, and that was a four-hour training. And then, we provided a seven-hour workshop for all of the members that were participating in the drafting of the self-evaluation. We had a little over 65 or so attendees, and this is where we went through a lot of exercises about, you know, searching for the evidence, what the process is, what the deadlines are, so that everyone felt informed and prepared as they went through the drafting process.
And if you look at both trainings, so far, we have over 75 participants in the accreditation process.
Which brings us to our next steps.
And our final slide.
So, the first thing is that we're finishing up draft number one. So, just to give you a little bit of background, which brought us to draft number one. So, the first thing that we asked each one of the standards committees and the writing groups to do is to provide an evidence grid. So, we asked them to start by identifying the evidence that they felt that they needed, so they were truly writing from an evidence-based perspective. We've already had those, we've, you know, given feedback based on that. And then, they drafted an outline, and then Matt and I went through and gave pretty extensive feedback on that outline. Based on the feedback we provided them, they went through and drafted their first draft. We're hoping to have all of the drafts in by the end of this week.
We're hoping that the second draft will be completed by the end of February, and then, again, that will go through a process of extensive review and feedback. The final draft, we're hoping, around the beginning of April. That will allow Stephanie, our self-evaluation coordinator, to begin her comprehensive edit to begin, to give the self-evaluation a unified voice, so that this final self-evaluation can go through the shared governance process next fall, and be submitted around December of next year, preparing us for our site visit in March. The final step, we hope.
We hope.
Yeah, so that's the end of our presentation. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Is there a question, Dr. Mann?
Yeah, I think this is probably something we also need to discuss at the retreat. But standard four is governance. And there is a requirement that the board be involved in the self-evaluation. So, I would suggest that you might want to go back when you talk about who's attended these trainings. You might want to mention that several board members went to the ACCJC training and so on. And you might want to, I don't know who's on that writing, on that writing team, but I'm sure you're aware that the campus is super found not to be in compliance. In California, recently, 60% had to do with the board. And the board not being involved in the self-study is a major problem. So, as far as I know, the board has not been involved in that self-evaluation. And maybe we can talk at our retreat, which is coming up in a little over a week, about appropriate ways that we can be involved, and if it's, what we've already missed. I mean, in the past, we always had a board member who has actually served on the self-study team, and has served on the individual standards. We haven't done that, so we need to figure out how else, I think, to involve the board.
Good point. Thank you. Any other questions?
Matt was going to respond.
Yeah. Thank you very much for your comment, and it's great that you asked that. Stephanie and I have recently had the experience of being at a conference with Barbara Bina, where she actually addressed the specific point. And she clarified what was meant by board participation. And she clarified that to mean that board participation can be defined by receiving reports, receiving information, and by reading and as an information item, receiving the final self-evaluation. It does by no means require serving on a writing group, or that level of participation.
But that's good.
And then, also to note, if you notice on draft number two, it's shared with the PCC community. So, draft number two will actually be shared with all of you, and you'll have an opportunity to give direct feedback to us. So, we've worked that into our schedule, based on the guidance that ACCJC gave us at those conferences.
Thank you. Ms. Frazier?
I will just say to touch on what Dr. Mann just said, that the boards that have come out of these self-evaluations looking better have been the more educated boards. Am I right in that? So, I mean, when we receive these reports, it would probably help that we know what we're talking about by attending, you know, the workshops and doing the webinar, the 101 on the ACCJC, you get a certification from it. So, those are ways that we can still participate in the process, and so, when we're receiving these reports, we're not just saying, okay, this looks great, wonderful, move on. We're actually understanding and providing some meaningful feedback in situations like this. Am I right?
Absolutely. And more for the audience, I will say that our Board of Trustees did take part in a comprehensive training by two ACCJC commissioners last May. But I am always happy to arrange more trainings at your pleasure.
Dr. Mann?
Another thing, just on the, I would just like to suggest on this, we received, the board members received the audit report yesterday, and we had to respond to it tonight. I have been on another team where the board members got the self-study the day before the meeting, and then acted to approve it the next day, and that was considered not adequate time. So, if you want the board, if the board's rolling, that's fine with me. I don't think anyone wants to be on one of these writing teams. But if you want the board to really review and respond, you have to give them a little time. And so, I hope we don't get a special delivery at our home 12 hours before we're supposed to. And I'm not exaggerating what happened with the audit, so that was...
When did the audit go out?
The audit to the subcommittee went out last week. To the actual rest of the board members, we sent it out, they got it yesterday.
We sent it out, well, I got it Monday evening. It was on my porch when I got home.
The committee received them on Wednesday, although Linda received hers on Thursday, I think, right?
I'm not going to kill it. It was not, the procedure was not followed.
Okay. All I'm saying is, I'm just using that example, I'm not criticizing it. But I, but, and we have, by the way, we have before received reports at our places the night we were to act on it. And I think Dr. Fellows may remember that. And I think, so we do need time. If we're, if that's, if our engagement is going to be receiving, reviewing reports, we need time.
You have our solemn promise, you will get it several months in advance.
Yes, there's a more detailed calendar, but there are several weeks between draft two and the final draft, so that we can, so we can deal adequately with the feedback from the PCC community.
There's several months. And of course, since in the last four years, they've issued a number of reports to the ACCJC. Every one has been well in front of the deadline, so.
Well, thank you for your report.
I would like to see the calendar, the more detailed calendar, which clearly indicates when we will be receiving material, that we will then be asked to act upon.
Absolutely. We'll forward it to Dr. Rocha to send to you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
As we do at the beginning of every semester, we like to hear a opening day enrollment report, Dr. Rocha?
Yes. Again, not a lengthy presentation. I will ask Crystal to come up in case you have any questions. The enrollment report is in front of you. It's basically very good news. Our sections are, we've scheduled more sections than we ever have. Our enrollment is up significantly in an environment where enrollment generally in our neighboring districts is not up. We expect those enrollment reports to go up significantly too, since we still have the weekend college and online classes to enroll. And the other thing, you see there, the average section size, and the unit load, 9.89, is an important number that we are now tracking. And that number should, we want that number to go up, because the, a full-time student must take 12 units. And so, the more full-time students we have, full-time students completing graduate at much higher rates. And then, also for the purposes of trustees in their areas and their constituent high schools, they show you the in-district enrollment, and shows generally that the in-district enrollment is, from each of our feeder high schools in the district, is up significantly. So, I, Crystal's here, in case the members have any questions.
Is there any questions? Mr. Thompson?
Just one question. On this sheet that we have, there's a heading, enrollments. Underneath that says, 76,356 were 14, and 71,525 were, what does, what is, how is the enrollments defined?
That's a student actually physically enrolled in a section. So, one student could be enrolled in multiple sections, so if a student is enrolled in three sections, that's three enrollments.
Okay. All right.
There's always a difference, the nomenclature, there's a difference between number of heads and the number of courses that they enrolled in, so.
Okay.
Any other comments, Ms. Brown?
Excuse me. So, do we have any mechanism in place to, I think Dr. Olivia had mentioned it, but what are we doing to try to help bring up our full-time students? Because we have more part-time than student, than full-time. And I think that would definitely be good for us, like we're trying to get these students through earlier. Students at part-time will be here a lot longer. So, are we, do we have a plan to try to stimulate full-time students?
Yeah, we do have a plan, and you can see in the middle, you see where Crystal has put this middle portion with a red box. You see all the way at the left, it says, day three, spring 2014, and census, spring 2013. Then, the number of full-time students, which is the second line, as of today, day three is 44%. This time last year, it was 34%. So, the number of our full-time students has increased by one-third in a year, which is extraordinary demonstration of the plan that we have in place to increase average student unit load, increase financial aid. Our financial aid exploded this year. When, in the audit, it went up to $46 million. So, trustee Brown, I think we're heading in the right direction.
So, what are the things that you could say is helping? What are the things that we're doing that we could say is helping to increase that?
Here comes Cynthia.
Cynthia, I knew she would come.
Good evening, trustee Brown. Thank you for your question. One of the campaigns that we've started is called Add One. And it's a nice video with a counselor describing the benefits of students adding one more class, and the benefits of being full-time. One is maximizing financial aid. Two is that national research shows students who are enrolled full-time are more likely to complete their goals. And third is that you can reach your goals faster. And we provide an email address for a student to reach out to a counselor, so that we can help the student determine which class to add. It's been a very successful campaign. We ran it in fall and in spring. And so, we also included a survey, so that we can learn more about what students need. Are we not offering the right sections? Do we need to offer more scholarships and financial aid? Do we need to offer courses at certain times and days? And that data, we've used to inform enrollment management. So, it's a very successful campaign. It's personalized, so that we reach out to the students who are enrolled part-time, and it's intentional, and it's working. So, that's one of the strategies that's successful.
Thank you.
Frazier?
And, you know, I will say, I did get hammered by email when I was only part-time for a little bit while I was trying to figure out the final course to add. And it was like, you're part-time? You sure you want to be part-time? You want to be part-time? Maybe you should be full-time. So, that, I said, fine, I'll just register for it now. Get on with it. So, it worked. Well done. I will just, I did have a question, though. When is census?
Well, it's when 20% of the course is complete, but we usually look at it the third Monday.
The third Monday, okay. And the reason I just, I, this is obviously a good trend. I just, being in the classroom, I know how the seats are massively filled, and then suddenly, they're not. So, it would be good to just see how it looks at census, spring 14, so then, we really know if it did work, or if we just encouraged students, and then they didn't stay in the class, they just dropped.
Well, we have to report census, because that's what we're paid on. So, there's an apportionment report called the 320 that we will present to the board.
Great. And then, my final question, just on enrollments. That doesn't count waitlisted? That's only people who are actually in a seat, not the waitlists, not the almost-enrolled, but the enrolled.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Thompson?
I noticed that in spring of 14 and spring of 13, again, the out-of-state residence has reversed itself remarkably. In 13, we had 1139. In 14, we got 483. The same token, international, in spring of 13, we had 350. In 14, we got 1104. How do we go about achieving this?
We think this has something to do with the installation of Banner and Alucian, that we're still trying to work out some of those codes. So, there could be some errors in those two numbers, which I think we'll get corrected shortly.
Correct me if I remember inaccurately, but I believe we've been intentionally seeking to increase the international enrollment, not drastically or dramatically, but increasing that over the course of the last couple of years. Is that correct?
Yes, and that's why the numbers reflect that we're above the 1,000 marker that we have historically remained at. So, although we're just slightly above that marker, we're... So although we're just slightly above that marker, we're very satisfied that at least it's on the increase.
Right. And then conversely, out-of-state has flipped around the opposite direction. Do we have any idea what caused that?
Like Crystal said, in, in Santa Rosa system, all those students were coded with a 999 number. And then the Ipro office had to help, you know, disaggregate that information. And in Banner, they're coded differently. So we have to investigate to see how we can more accurately count non-resident students, those who are coming from out-of-state versus international students.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. I just want to make one, one final observation here. At the bottom of this sheet, we've got spring 2013, spring 2014 enrollment by in-district high schools. And we have a remarkable increase in enrollment from Pasadena High School, a fairly significant enrollment increase at John, from John Muir High School. But this fits in very well with a meeting that I attended last evening. I am the president of Pasadena Educational Foundation. We have begun a practice of neighborhood meetings, reaching out into the neighborhood to let people know what's happening with the public schools in Pasadena. And we had a meeting in the Madison Heights area of Pasadena in tremendous turnout. We probably had 60, 70 people there just at a home. And John Gundry, the superintendent of PUSD, came and spoke. And a question was asked by a member of the audience about the relationship between PUSD and PCC, and which I was delighted to be able to stand up and immediately help address. But Superintendent Gundry was very, very positive about the relationship between PUSD and PCC and just felt that we were doing a terrific job. Our pathways project is paying off and we've just a lot to be grateful for. And they're very, very appreciative of the relationship between public schools in Pasadena and, and PCC.
And let's throw in Arcadia, which almost doubled, more than doubled, which is interesting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number M this evening is the 2014 administration functions and staffing. And we do have a public comment.
We do have a comment. We have a request from Dan Haley to address the board on this issue. Mr. Haley?
Good evening. My name is Dan Haley. I'm the treasurer of the Academic Senate, and I'm going to address you tonight about the reorganization. Because this reorganization will directly affect faculty functions, it falls under PCC Policy 2000 and also the Title V, both of which require mutual agreement on this change. I have to report to you that mutual agreement has not been achieved here. This plan was shown to the leadership of the Academic Senate at the last College Council meeting. In a PowerPoint presentation, the leadership asked for copies of the plan so that we could distribute it to our constituents. For some reason, that request was denied. There was only one copy of the plan made available. It was in the superintendent president's office. It couldn't leave that office. It could not be photocopied. This is not what we call mutual agreement, and it's not what we call collegial consultation. This plan is going to adversely affect faculty in two ways. Right now, the, each faculty academic division has its own dean who has direct access to the vice president of academic affairs. With this plan, those approximately 12 division deans are going to be squeezed into five deans. So each faculty member is going to have a harder time accessing their dean. And in addition, there's an extra administrator in between the vice president of academic affairs and the academic deans, which means it's going to be much harder for us to have much of a voice in, in, in campus affairs. I would urge you to please postpone this vote until we could reach mutual agreement with the Academic Senate. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we're going to be discussing this, I believe, at the upcoming retreat. Do you have anything else to add?
No. Item M is not up for vote today. I'd say, first of all, it's just there as an information item so that the entire public and seat has been posted on the website since last Friday night. We continue to get input, mostly positive. We fully consulted with the president of the Associated Students and a student trustee today on it. The consultation will continue with all constituents. I might add that the matter of mutual agreement, first of all, as Counsel Mary Dowell told you when you approved the reorganization on August 29, 2012, that the organization of the administration is a, a matter that belongs to the board and the administration. Having said that, your policy Board 2000 does require mutual agreement on 10 plus one items. We would love to have reached mutual agreement with the Senate on this and many other issues this year, but the Senate leadership has not come to the CAPA meetings that the board requires so that we can fully consult this issue. But having said that, we will continue the consultation. And we will continue the consultation and, and get feedback. And I'll be taking to the College Council again. We've heard loud and clear the, the objections of the Senate and, and take them and respect them. I would also say finally, though, for the public record, when the board charges the, the administration to staff, which is, by the way, an accreditation requirement, the accreditor requires that we have an org chart this year of all years, and we have never had one that we publish in, in the catalog. But it's very, very important that you and the public know who by name is accountable to the board for the various functions. And so while we deeply respect and the view of the Senate and would love to engage the Senate in further conversations on this and many other issues, the board and the administration staffs an administration based on what's best for the college and primarily the students. I can assure the Board of Trustees, and I really want to thank many of the managers who are here tonight, who are on that, who are on that page and have worked through this and been part of the consultation. But I do want to assure the Board of Trustees that, which is why you voted for the reorganization in the first place, that the, the staffing will actually enhance accountability and actually enhance service to the, to the faculty, will actually free up resources that we can put to the faculty for professional development and other activities. And most, but most important, it will provide for the much clearer accountability. We've had, very, very proud of the work that we've done in the administration. But you are well aware of the many administrative issues that we have faced in the last year or two with the transition to Banner, with veterans issues, with financial aid, and so on and so forth. This plan will assure that the board and the public will be able to hold the administration accountable for these outcomes, since it is the administration or only the administration that you hold responsible for these outcomes. So we look forward to continuing to talk with our friends in the faculty and, at College Council, and look forward to engaging this with the board at the retreat.
We're all going, we're going to be talking about this in a week, but is there any comments?
I do have a comment, or actually a question. I know that since we moved the health science over to CEC, there have been a lot of mumbling because every time I go in a community, they're wondering what is going on over at CEC because folks feel a little, you know, dislodged because CEC has been historically and is, I would say, a non-credit section where they just go and adults go over there to learn skills, you know what it's about. Okay, so one question that I have is on this org chart that we have here, where we have the dean of academic affairs. I think at the bottom, there is a vacant, a non-credit division, adult education, AB86 vacant. What do you plan, or what is your intention? What level of staff would you be putting there? Is that going to be a director? Would that be a dean? What, what level of would you be putting there?
Thank you for the question, Trustee Brown. It's anticipated that position will be a dean-level position, Assistant Associate Dean, who will have oversight for all of our non-credit programs. And the timeliness of this is fortuitous because we are in discussions now with Pasadena Unified School District of developing the consortium on the AB86. And much of what will come out of that discussion and the intent that it will submit January 31 will define what our engagement will be in addition to the standard programs we've done as the CEC, but also more in connection with the consortium work we'll be doing with the school district, probably as soon as mid to late spring 14.
Okay. And the other question that I have was, well, maybe I'll wait for the retreat to discuss that one. Thank you.
Is there any, any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you. This is the time for the superintendent president's report, and President Rocha will give a report on the college operations initiatives and shared governance.
Yes, thank you. President Fellon, I'll be very, very brief, but I did want to make some brief kind of highlights. First of all, I do point out that we have, a lot of our managers are working overtime on Saturday. We have a faculty hiring fair, as President Cairo pointed out. And so I think that's going to be a great step forward for the students to be able to staff more sections. So that's going on Saturday. Invite you to, to show up. There'll be, I hope there'll be coffee and, and doughnuts. So, okay, faculty hiring fair. I remind everybody and the public that the Martin Luther King holiday is on Monday, and so therefore the, the college here will be closed. But many of you, many of us will be out and about in the city of Pasadena, celebrating the day and having it a, a day for social justice. So just reminder of that. We have, I did want to note that, as I say, I call it Associate Vice President-elect, Dave Douglas, is moving forward remarkably on a whole number of STEM programs and has been doing some traveling conferences and so on. And one of the purposes of asking Dave to fill this new role is to be able to enhance our revenue from grants from both the federal government and foundations. They will also be taking on such strategic projects as the transfer to private schools such as Whittier and other private schools outside of the CSU and UC, especially in the area of STEM. So we're very fortunate moving on. And my last note is this, and which is just a, kind of an underline on the audit. First of all, I thank you for accepting my recommendation to receive this report. I think, and I also want to thank the Board Audit Committee chaired by Dr. Selvage and Trustee Brown and Trustee John, just extraordinary work. So you've heard all of that. But I did want to point out a couple of things because in an audit report, which is a financial snapshot, there is embodied the work of literally the entire administration. And so in receiving the report, you have accepted the auditor's view that there are no material weaknesses, and that's, that's a good thing. There's things that we have to work on. That's a good thing, too. But I did want to note, for example, in the Pasadena City College Foundation, and Bobby Abram is here, and of course, our, our friends, our volunteers who serve on the board of that foundation, and you don't have to go it, but the audit shows that in the past year, in the year that was closed, that the foundation took in $3 million in new donations and fundraising, extraordinarily record for a community college, and that we put out over $2 million that went directly to students, okay, in, in the form of scholarships and on, and thank all of you who are at the scholarship reviews. That's extraordinary progress. The foundation, by the way, the endowment is now at 23 million. Four years ago, it was about 16. So the foundation, under Bobby Abram's leadership, is doing extraordinary things, and I thank you for your support. I do also note on Measure P, I think Ruben is still in the room, and that on this Measure P report, on this propitious moment in which next year you are going to open the, and officially dedicate the Center for the Arts, which is the capstone project of Measure P, okay? After all this time and after all this money, you've received a report that is absolutely spotless in terms of its financial reporting. And, and Ruben picked that up a year and a half ago, literally on the fly, okay? And with the, the things that we had to do, as you're aware of, there were a few moments there when we, when the, when the contractor went bankrupt, you recall, and so on and so forth. So I just, you know, as I shouted out to Bob, I wanted to shout out to Ruben and his whole staff for that extraordinary report. And the district, I want to thank everybody in Bob's area, Joe Simoneshi, Marie DeScavo, and everyone in business and college services for the work they've done, not just on the audit, but for the work they've done that actually produces an audit that says that we've got good, clear books and we're financially stable. So with that, that is the sum and substance of my report.
Is there any questions or comments to the president? Thank you. We'll now turn to shared governance representatives to give us one or two upcoming items of interest. Mr. Orozco, I don't, didn't see him.
No, it's, come on. Good evening. My name is Nicholas Adarithe. I'm vice president for external affairs. I'm here on behalf of President Orozco. Some of the things that I've been asked to highlight are the Week of Welcome currently going on in, in the quad. As you'll see, every day, we've been out there trying to table, tabling students and notifying them of the different services that we offer and the colleges, the college offers, such as counseling and health services. Personally, my committee is working on going to the CCLC Annual Legislative Conference later on in this month. And we're kind of putting together our legislative agenda for the rest of the year. And we'll be going, we'll be visiting Washington DC in March and Sacramento again sometime in February. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure. Mr. Altamirano, Classified Senate?
I'm Yahira de la Paz, Job Developer in our Career Center and part of the Classified Senate Staff Secretary. I'm here on behalf of Tito Altamirano. He's out today. And just to deliver the information, the Classified Senate is looking forward to a year that will have more professional learning opportunities for the classified staff. We will be having a main event coming up in May in celebration of the Week of Classified Senate and of appreciation, and that's going to be held in the Huntington Library. And we will also have smaller events throughout the year that are going to be aiming to empower the Classified Senate. And this will be done with the help and collaboration of the Classified Senate and also the Academy of Professional Learning. So thank you for your continued support and your time.
Thank you. Mr. Cairo, Academic Senate?
Thank you. As Matt stated earlier, the Academic Senate, recognizing that it's going to have a very busy calendar, we had our first meeting on Monday, and the focus of the meeting was to invite a representative from the statewide representation. The meeting itself was informative and lively at times. And I'll say that the, the two main issues, the recurring issues of the meeting was, from the senators, was an unresponsive board and an unresponsive administration. And based on the information that we received, we're going to seek guidance from the California Community League as well as the Chancellors Office to try to obtain some resolution to our problems so that we can all move forward. That was a focus of our meeting. And in regards to the CAPA meetings, as I stated today, and as I stated to you many, many times, the unwillingness of the executive committee to meet is as a result of the inaccurate information that comes out from these meetings. So as a result of this, yes, there are no CAPA meetings. But at the same time, I must say that the questions, many, many questions that we have sent to the administration have also gone unanswered. So I guess the best way to put it is that both sides are unwilling to, to discuss, to meet, to answer the questions that should be answered before anything has happened. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Douglas, Management Association?
Thank you. The managers welcome you back after the new year. We've been here for a week and a half, building that enrollment, getting students into classes and other charges as handed down. We had a great management team meeting again, this, our monthly management team meeting again today. And today, and we look forward to the new semester. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now turn to announcements by the board of trustees. Mr. Frazier?
Just a couple. I just want to commend the staff, especially those who work in the L Building doing enrollment, financial aid counseling, because I've not heard a single complaint that a student could get a class. I think that's the first time I've been at PCC where I haven't heard that complaint in some form or another, and it shows that something over in that building is being done right. And there's a positive change happening over there. So thank you very much, the hard workers over there, who are getting students into seats. It's appreciated. The Student Trustee Association will be having its first annual spring conference in March, which will be designed as a professional development day for student trustees on effective trusteeship for the remainder of their short terms, but still useful tools as they move on to other things and also legislative advocacy, which will be continuing by the current incumbent student trustees up through August because of the way that that all gets set up. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Martin?
Happy New Year. I'd like to thank Board President Fellow and Dr. Rocha and the whole team for what I consider to be a phenomenal meeting, because when you think about it tonight, we, and in our packets, I appreciate how succinct and clear it was. We talked about student enrollment. We talked about our finances through the audit. We talked about accreditation. We talked about policies and procedures, and we covered a lot of really important key elements of what makes Pasadena City College, it seemed like, just a great start to a new year, to get all that refreshed succinctly. And so I'm appreciative to you and to you and to all of you for the way that all that information came in. And I think it was a great warm-up for our new trustee to get all that in that kind of format. So kudos to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Selvage?
Yes, I got a little bit out of step when the auditors were here, and I'm going to call them and apologize for not recognizing at that time. They did a great job of responding to all the questions, and they put up with a lot of questions from us during that committee meeting. But they did a really good job. They got, they produced a fine product, and it made it easy for me, looking at my first set of PCC books, to get through that.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
No announcements.
Dr. Mann?
No announcements.
Ms. Wa?
I was at the BOG meeting as the league representative this, earlier this week. And so I encourage everyone to go on to the chancellor's side and to look at some of the reports from the BOG. Anyway, I just want to call out a few things that I thought were interesting. One was, one item that they voted on was the BOG waiver, and they did take a motion to exempt the foster youth from having to appeal for that waiver, but there was a second motion that was voted on by the BOG, and that was to then study other underserved groups that might be able to appeal and what the impact would be if they were not to allow that. So I thought that was significant. And then, while there were a number of things, they talked about the student success, and they're not tracking that and have empirical evidence to show that many of the steps they are taking are indeed resulting in success. But one thing that is near and dear to my heart has been internships. And so the foundation did report on some of the work that they're doing on internships. And one of the things they reported is their data shows that 60% of all of the students that they've placed in paid internships then go on to be hired full-time by the companies that they're placed in. So I really highly encourage us to also look at that model and to work on that.
Thank you.
Let me make one other announcement. Thanks. As you know, I'm also on the Board of Directors of the LA County School Trustees Association, and we've been kicking off a number of roundtables on the adult education issue. And the certification of consortiums is due at the end of this month. The money has been allocated by the chancellor's office for adult ed, and so the next steps are to apply for that money and to, well, and to develop your plan and to show that you have a consortium. So roundtable number three, under LACSTA, for adult ed, will occur on February 3, and we will hold that at the Rio Hondo Community College at nine o'clock in the morning, and we'll send out announcements soon.
Thank you very much. Ms. Brown?
No announcement.
I just wanted to mention that, one thing I'd like to do, as I've mentioned before, is to open up the communications between shared governance and the board, and I would like to set up a meeting very soon with the board officers and shared governance, just a very informal meeting. And then from there on out, I will, every other month or so, have the other trustees join us. We can have three trustees and the shared governance. Any future agenda items?
I would like to request one. I have been really worried. Sorry, I'm just, every day I'm sick. I mean, I get away one cold, then two weeks back, I'm back again. I think I'm dying. Anyhow, what I would like is if we could get a report or an update as on the status of the U building, I'm still concerned as to what's going on with there. Maybe there isn't no report, but if there isn't any, bring one and let me know there is any. And if there is, are we trying to get a loan or what is it? Just please, if we could just get a status on what is going on with the U building. Is it fully vacant? Is, are we going to rebuild? Or I just need to know what's going on. Thank you.
We will bring that report next time without fail.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes, one of the items we had in our packet was a document that's entitled "Impact of Federal Education Dollars on Your Campus." And I'd really like to have that information provided. It's broken down by federal Pell Grant summary, number of federal supplemental education opportunity grant recipients, et cetera. That would be very informative and, I think, very helpful to us. There's an upcoming association meeting back in DC, and it'd be very helpful to have that information before that happens. Also, I'd like to have on the agenda, the topic of the commencement speaker recommendations. And I mean, we got this multiple-page document, and it's always kind of puzzled me as to the role of the board, if there is one, in selecting the commencement speaker. And we end up with some that are interesting and some maybe not quite so interesting. And I would like to have it as just an agenda item so we know what really is our role in this process. Do we just sit here and have announced who's going to be the commencement speaker, or do we have a say in it? And if so, how does that happen? So that would be my request for an agenda topic as well.
Trustee Thompson, as with all things, the board has all the say. And so, but I've asked President Fellow to put commencement on the retreat agenda because we have a recommendation from the commencement committee as to possible speakers, but we also need to talk about commencement planning.
We got six pages of it, apparently.
We also have an outreach committee chaired by Ms. Wa, who will also be working with the campus on commencement and commencement planning and procedures.
Right.
Oh, then it's Ms. Wa that we should blame for these six pages of speakers?
Blame her for everything.
One final request for the retreat, and it's probably implicit in what we're doing anyway, that, but, and I think you touched on it, Dr. Fellow, in alluding to the meetings with the shared governance leadership, et cetera, but I think we need to really spend a little bit of time focusing on the relationship as to what it is. Is it, would we receive reports and sit and listen and smile, or is there more, ought to be going on or is going on than just that? And so I'd like to have that as a topic of discussion, ideally at the retreat if we have room for it on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Ms. Wa?
Yes, I had mentioned this before, but I guess I would like this put on the future agenda items, and that is, I think in November of this year, we should have, it will be approximately a year since we will have, or the anniversary date of the implementation of ILUSSION. And so I would like to see that baseline performance data that shows what the, how this, the automation has moved us towards student success and what those milestones have been. Likewise, you know, over the past three or four years that I've been on this board, we have hired a number of positions that have been new to the college, and I think it would be helpful for us all to know, and maybe this comes under the report on data student success, how those new positions have contributed towards student success, what have been the measurable outcomes that have moved us toward that. And lastly, I know the Small Business Development Report and Plan are still on here. We don't have a date. I know my community, as well as my colleague, Trustee Thompson, has been asking for this plan, but I think it would be helpful if we have at least a timeline by when we can expect this development plan. I think we had the big kickoff a few months ago, and so it would be good to know when we can expect a business plan on this.
Now, speaking of that, today, I don't know if you heard, President Obama named Ms. Maria Contreras-Suizt as head of the Small Business Administration, who's a very close friend of ours, so hopefully we'll have a friend and another friend in Washington. Thank you very much for this meeting this evening, for being here. This meeting is adjourned.[1764.38][1764.38][music][1765.38]